So I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Matt, what time is it?
Seven oh three.
Seven oh three, yeah, we're on time, guys. So, River Valley's meeting. Petitions or deletions to the agenda, anybody? Okay, we have lots of homework, we're gonna see who actually are good students and did their homework. First thing was Andrew McLean, our district clerk, Andy, how are you, sir?
Good, and you?
Uh, very good, thank you, buddy. So we brought to talk, first thing is about the FY 2020 budget vote by Australian ballot. We're stuck in that, we resign ourselves to that. I think the whole group is feeling pretty confident, the board, and from what members of the public have told us that they would really like to have a floor vote about that at our annual meeting. And I know you had done some research for us. So, you gave us something, um, you sent us something, a warning, and I think, Article two is your suggested wording, is shall the voters amend Article thirteen of the Articles of Agreement, striking the last two sentences of the first paragraph, which will allow the unified district to vote its annual budget from the floor at their annual meeting. And it's a yes or no question, that's what we're required to do statute. I think you looked it up and you sent me the statute. And we can't ask, you know, choose one or the other, choose option A or option B, it's a yes or no.
Yes.
Okay, so, does anybody, I think we've kind of come to that conclusion, is everybody good with that? So this would be part of, um, this would be part of the, um, the ballot that you would see on town meeting day in both Wardsborough and Dover.
Yes.
And everybody got a copy of that, we sent it out, there was like twenty-five pages that we sent out with the agenda.
I didn't get that.
You didn't get that, well, it had a lot about the school choice policy, which, I don't know if you're interested in that.
No, I'm good.
Okay, I thought so, and I didn't wanna plug up your email. But, so, um, Article one is to choose the, um, to choose the Unified School District officer for the following position from school director in Wardsborough, and there'll be names there, and then school director for Dover, and there'll be names there. Then Article two is the one I just read. Article three, shall the voters change the method of voting for board members in Wardsborough by amending Article thirteen of the Articles of Agreement, replacing the last paragraph with the following language. Election of unified district members will be conducted by Australian ballot in Dover and from the floor in Wardsborough, with each town electorate choosing the board member from their town. Again, a yes or no. And then the all-important Article four, which is shall the voters of the River Valley Unified School District approve the school board to expend ten million, six hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars in benefits.
Ten million?
Why'd you throw them out there, see if everybody's awake there? And then Article five, shall the voters, if there's anything else that we need to come up with.
Um, Article five would start the floor vote, I don't know, in warning, um, warning the meeting, it's a little tricky as to how, how you wanna handle it. Do you wanna warn, um, the meeting, um, the floor vote in February, uh, and the, uh, the election and ballot in March as one meeting, which you continue, or as two annual meetings, or two parts of the same annual meeting? Um, but, that Article five would be where the floor vote starts.
Okay, so anything we were gonna bring up and discuss?
Yeah, all, everything you wanted to discuss in February would start at Article five and continue down, on, on the warning.
Does that make sense, everybody?
It does.
It's confusing, but...
So Australian ballot?
The top of it, the top of the ballot, Articles one through four are Australian ballot.
Town meeting.
Right, so you go up to your person, you'll give them your name, and they'll hand you a ballot, and you go vote, fold it up and give it to... And then, the annual school district meeting is a different date.
Yeah, technically, the, technically on town meeting day, we'll, we'll have town meeting, and we'll also have a unified school district meeting, for the purposes of Australian ballot.
A vote.
Right, and so, you know, warning it, we'll figure out how to do it. But you, it's sort of, um, sort of a gray area, whether you wanna, um, warn the meeting, the floor vote in February, and the Australian ballot in March as one meeting, or whether you wanna warn them as separately as two meetings. I think probably the safest way to do it would be to warn them, uh, meet both, meet the criteria for having warned both individually. Okay, so, um, there's a ten-day window, uh, to warn annual meetings, uh, no more than forty days prior, no, no later than thirty days prior. So those two windows are different because the meetings are about a month apart, the floor vote and the, um, and the ballot vote. Um, but we'll figure that out, that's nothing you need to worry about, we'll figure out how we're gonna do that.
And we'll still have some things to vote on, even though we're not voting budget and members, um, 'cause we have to vote for the clerk, we have to vote for the treasurer, and authority to, to spend money and whatever other stuff that we, we come up with.
Yep, yep, you might have, you might have a bunch of articles, you might just have a couple, I don't know, but, yeah.
We'll have a minimum, but at least two.
Right, um, one thing I did wanna, uh, bring up is, uh, I spoke to Jackie, and I also spoke to, um, LHS, the company that, um, that builds the, uh, the vote tabulator, and who, uh, programs the cards and prints ballots, if you're gonna use that. If you wanted, uh, we could, um, have them print ballots, one for each town. The yes or no questions, and the, um, the voting of the, uh, of the officers. Okay, so the, the yes or no questions would be the same in each town. The ballots would differ from, between towns in the, uh, election of officers. Wardsborough would vote for their officer, Dover would vote for theirs. It would be on one ballot. Um, the machine would be in Dover, this is on town meeting day. In Dover, you would, uh, as, when we do, when we use the machine, typically, the voters put their, uh, their ballot through the machine. Um, after town meeting day in Wardsborough, two of Jackie's BCA members would transport those ballots to Dover, um, and they, they would be fed through the machine.
They would feed them through the machine?
They would, they, or, and, the election, uh, for the Unified School District is controlled by a, um, a combined Board of Civil Authority. So those two members from Wardsborough, or more, um, however many wanna come, right, would show up and we'd have our BCA members, and that, the, those members together from Dover and Wardsborough would be the, the, the board that governs elections in the River Valley School, uh, School District. That board would feed the ballots through the tabulator, and the tabulator can be configured to spit out a combined total vote for the yes or no questions. So they would be commingled, we wouldn't have a Dover voted this way, Wardsborough voted that way, it would be combined, and it would spit out individual tallies for the two towns for the officers. Makes everything a lot easier and smoother at town meeting, and you only have one ballot. In Dover, we might wind up with two, 'cause we vote our officers at town meeting. That could also be incorporated on this ballot, I don't know if it will be, but it would make things a lot easier, especially in Wardsborough. And for this, uh, for this group, um, in tallying the results, it would make things infinitely easier. To configure the tabulator and print the ballots, um, would cost seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Um, if you guys wanna spend that money, uh, I'll coordinate that for you. Seven hundred and fifty-six bucks. Now, if Dover decided to vote their officers on this ballot and be part of that configuration, they would pick up part of the cost, and it might lower that, but...
What would your preference be?
Use the tabulator.
No, I meant to... Really? No, I meant, would you, would you wanna see the town be separate from the school on this, or would you want it? Are you okay with the thing?
Uh, in Dover, you mean?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, I'd wanna think about it, maybe talk to the select board, see how people feel about it. Um, we haven't used the ta, the tabulator for a town meeting in, in Dover yet. You know, my initial thought is, it would be a good idea, um, with the River Valley's, uh, stuff going on at the same time, on the same night, it would, um, it would take some pressure off of our Board of Civil Authority and, um, but it would also delay the start of the count, um, because we have to get the ballots from Wardsborough to Dover and feed them through the tabulator. But, if you're not hand-counting in Dover, it might wind up being the same time that you get results. It's something I wanna think about, I don't know.
Okay, so, how about if we do this, if, if everybody in the board is pretty good with this, we can make a motion to approve up to eight hundred dollars?
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, there is money available from the study, you know, to, to do that kinda stuff. I would imagine that is a very appropriate defense. No, we haven't spent it all yet, 'cause we haven't done a lot of lawyer work yet, but, I mean, it's something that we're gonna have to do. Okay, so anyways, um, so we could do that, if that was appropriate for what you want.
Uh, okay, then let's do it.
Okay, so, let's go into questions in the board first, and questions in the public, and Laura's just chomping at the bit.
I'm not chomping, I really don't, I just wanna make sure I'm following.
Yes.
So, it's possib, so we're talking about printing two ballots, and the first part would be the same information, and the second part would be different information, it would be the officers.
That's right.
Okay.
We have the officers in Article one, so that's the beginning.
Hold on. Let me see if I can stay with this, Richard, thanks, okay, so... But it's possible that in Dover, we may keep the officers on the other town meeting ballot, where they have been in the past. That's something we're considering.
You could do that.
Is that part of what we were just talking about?
Um, it might have been.
No, you, you wanna do that. You won't, you, your, your thought was you would do the school ballot, and if you combined a school and town ballot in Dover, then it would all be on one, but, no, you, if not, you were gonna do the, the ballot the same in both Wardsborough
Okay.
and Dover, with the exception of the name that appears as who you're voting for.
So that's what I, I think I heard all of the same things, which was the first thing that I said, and then the second thing, which is, possibly we could keep the Dover people on the regular town meeting ballot, the officers.
So... What I was trying to say was, um, we can have the River Valley's Union District ballots include the yes or no questions, and the River Valley's officers. In Dover, we elect our town officers by ballot. So, in Dover, we could also incorporate our town officer votes onto the River Valley's ballot to be counted by the tabulator.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying, okay. Great, thank you, I'm happy to follow, um, where you feel like is best to go with this, but I do have one more question. Just a curiosity question.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't know if this is appropriate or not, actually, it's for Wardsborough. Have you guys figured out what you're doing? I don't know who's, wha, um...
Well, Andy, Andy contacted.
Well, 'cause you guys usually go from the floor, so it just occurred to me, like, do you guys have to do petitions and stuff?
Yeah.
Have you guys figured that out?
Yeah, we did do the same thing we did last time.
Oh, we did it, we already did that.
We did that.
Okay, great, okay, I think that's all.
But you've been in contact with Jackie, and she's supporting you, whatever you kinda want, so... Because all she has to do is just collect the, the ballots for you, put them in a bag, seal it, and have her BCA people bring it to you.
She has to run a checklist, same as always, and, uh, that needs to be, uh, part of what's, uh, transported, and, um, now, the... What the tabulator does besides, uh, making the counting easier, is it eliminates, uh, the need for two ballots. So if you're gonna hand count, um, then commingling, uh, the budget vote, you can't commingle the election of officers for River Valleys, right, the two towns, you have to keep those separate. So Wardsborough would wind up with two ballots, um, probably two checklists. So would Dover. Dover might wind up with three ballots, depending upon how we handle the town vote. So it's not just, um, making the, uh, counting of ballots, um, faster, because it's a machine, but it's also combining the number of ballots onto one ballot, making it easier for voters to understand.
Clear as mud.
All right, excellent.
No, it's fine, I don't need to really, I, I have a lot of faith in you, Andy. So you're still kind of deliberating where you wanna, you wanna talk to the select board?
Yeah, as far as Dover's town officers, like myself, I don't think I'm up for election this year, but, you know, the select board, right? Those votes in Dover are normally by Australian ballot. Whether those votes go on this partic, on this ballot with the River Valley stuff, is a question I haven't fully thought through.
'Cause we've never used a tabulator to count the town elections.
No, we haven't.
So it's, you know, that, those have always been counted by hand. So he could still do that, we could have the two separate ballots, and the town ones would be counted by hand, but then, that usually takes an hour and a half or so, so it would delay, you know, 'cause it maybe takes Wardsborough people forty minutes to get here, but they would have to wait till the one vote was done, because then we have to set up to count the other ones.
Does anyone have a more question?
Yeah.
Can I ask another question? So, um, how are you feeling, uh, security-wise about the tabulator?
Uh, our tabulator is...
And transmission?
I'm feeling perfectly secure, it's not tied to the internet, and there are paper ballots, actual paper ballots, um, that are retained in the vault afterward. The current system, um, I'm perfectly comfortable with.
We've been using a tabulator for several years, right, for national elections?
State and national.
So, anybody else have any questions in the board?
Just one, one small...
Hmm, good.
Is it separate, is it one ballot, right, it's all have the directors from Dover and Wardsborough on it, or did I get that right?
Nope.
No.
So, in Wardsborough, um, you'll have a Wardsborough-specific ballot, which, and the only difference between Wardsborough and Dover's is the officer. The same public questions, and a different officer. And I'll, I'll get with Jackie and provide, uh, you know, uh, make sure you guys, um, have petition forms for your officer, uh, with plenty of time to get signatures before we need those names.
Okay, anybody from the public, if they, if you're...
Hmm?
'Cause I'll have to get up to you.
Well, we'll have to have Jackie check the checklist to make sure they got the voters here.
We'll figure that out.
Yeah.
We'll figure that out, yeah. For sure, um, probably they will come to me, yes.
Yeah, we'll say, Laura's still going.
Sorry, hold on.
No, that's fine.
You know, so, are we, this is gonna, sorry if this is a crazy question. So, as we're developing these systems, you're, like, tracking them in terms of, here's how we run the River Valley's elections? Like, procedures, this new thing, are we tracking that anywhere?
So...
In case, God forbid, something happens to you.
Right. Yeah. There you go, no, um, so, uh...
We recorded it for us.
Yes, but, jeez, I'm on, all right, so, uh... I'm really hoping, I'm really hoping, um, that the voters decide to vote their budgets from the floor. I am, um, I think it would be good for the, not just because it would be good for me personally, but I think it's good for, uh, the school district, um, which would do a lot of things. Um, if they also decide, whether or not they decide, but if they also decided to vote, uh, their officer from the floor in Wardsborough, that helps Jackie. If, if they don't, then she's in the same boat Dover is, we elect officers at town meeting. But, it's something we're used to doing. It's something we're used to doing, and it's, and it's relatively easy, okay? The difficulty comes in voting your budget from the floor and commingling the ballots. That's where all this craziness comes from. If that goes away, I'll, I'll write procedures, certainly, but the procedures will be simple. If, uh, if we maintain the, the budget vote, um, by Australian ballot, and it's commingled, the, then the, the procedures will be difficult, yeah.
Great.
All right.
Anita.
I just wanted to say that as soon as some of this is settled, from a communication standpoint, I don't think it's ever too soon to start explaining it, so that I can have more opportunities to explain it more times.
Yep.
So, uh, keep me in the loop?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anybody else from the public? Is it as clear as mud?
I have a question.
For Andy or us?
For Andy. Um, items that are on Australian ballot can't be discussed?
No, they can.
Is that correct?
Yeah, they can now.
They can now, okay.
That's how we were able to discuss the Act forty-six vote.
I thought that maybe it was exclusive to Act forty-six.
Elections can't be discussed.
Okay.
So you can't say, if Andy and I are both running, we can't, you know, give a speech, vote for me, or vote for Hammer, but...
But you can explain the voting.
You can explain the voting thing, you can explain, uh, the actual questions on the ballot.
So that was why we discussed as a board, that it's gonna be very important for us, even though at town meeting, it's not really a school district meeting, but, just to let people know for, in Wardsborough and in Dover, that when you go to vote, you know, this is, this is what you're voting for, and, and this is what it means. And again, with Anita saying that, you know, she needs a lot of time, um, you know, it, it's a, it's kinda a little bit confusing. It's taking everybody a little bit to get their heads around, 'cause it's a big change for a lot of different people.
And one thing a lot of people always seem to wanna know is the absentee option, if it's Australian ballot.
Absentees will be available.
Right, so we need to make that well-known in advance as well.
But that follows the standard, rules.
There's a deadline, that, when they need to be available. It's tight with the deadline for petitions, but we can do it.
So, Andy did give us, so we, we had the calendar from, um, oh, I'm drawing a blank, the business manager, Laurie, and then Andy gave us, it says RV USD on the top, twenty nineteen, and it kinda has some nice colors. Did everybody get colors? So, there's a ten-day window to warn the annual floor meeting, and that starts on January second, goes to the twelfth. So that means in December, we gotta have all that done, 'cause we have to have it to Andy there to warn.
Yeah, you'll want, you'll want your, uh, warning done and signed, and it doesn't specify, but probably to me and Jackie to record before that window.
So, if, it'll probably be the first meeting in December, we'll need to at least have that done. But we won't need the budget numbers then, because that's not gonna be voted on. And then, August, uh, January twenty-fourth through February second is the window for warning the meeting, the budget, and anything else that's gonna be voted on by Australian ballot. And the important date is January twenty-eighth, your school director petitions need to be in. And, I don't know who is on, are you, did you do a two here or three here?
What did you do?
I did four, there's four, three, and two.
I think I might have done three.
So probably Carrie, and do you guys know what's...
Rick does the two.
Okay, so you'll need to do a petition if you wanna stand. And then, February twelfth is the annual floor meeting, and that's when absentee ballots are ready. So you can actually hand out, oh, no, 'cause you, you can't hand out absentee ballots, right, they have to fill out a paper to ask?
Uh, they do, and, you know, it's possible we could coordinate some of that with your, uh, floor vote meeting. I wouldn't guarantee it, but it's quite possible we could do that. Can I ask you one question, Rich?
Yes.
So, when will you have your budget number?
December. But we have, we have the beginning of January, so we'll probably finalize it, just 'cause it's a first-time budget. You know, I would see, the seventh is our first meeting in January.
Yep.
So I would hope by then, we, we'd be signing and not waiting until the twenty-first.
Okay.
But we meet on the seventh and twenty-first of January, so, if we need to correct anything, we would have that extra meeting.
All right, 'cause I'm thinking, uh, I don't know, I, I'm thinking it would be fine to have your budget by that second ten-day window, but I'm not positive of that. You might need to have it by the first.
Our meeting would be the twenty-first, so we, I would hopefully, that it wouldn't be after that, that gives you three days before your ten-day window.
Right, but I'm, what I'm saying is, it might, you might need to have it for that first ten-day window. I'm not positive of that. I'm not positive of that. We won't, but you're warning your annual meeting.
Right, so we would just put that we can have a budget discussion, but we don't have to leave on a number at the annual meeting?
But you'd have to have two separate warnings, different warnings.
Right.
For two different annual meetings.
Right.
I don't know if that would fly.
I see what you're saying. But then, so we could still be okay, if, we should shoot for December then.
Yep.
But we're still okay if we have to go to seven, 'cause that's in that window.
That's right.
But no later, okay, I see what you're saying. Does everybody get that, so if we're gonna have just one warning, then we would definitely have to have it ready by the seventh. And, and that would be the last...
I would think that would be our goal, 'cause this is gonna be confusing enough for people to just take in all of these changes that are going on anyway.
Okay, and then, so anyways, everybody, and then, um, annual Australian ballot is, town meeting is, is March fifth, it's gonna be here, twenty nineteen. And everybody got this correct? Okay, anybody else from the public that's confused? Matt? Matt spoke it down. All good? How about you? Andy, you all set?
I got it.
You got it? You're here. Andy?
Sweet.
I think we're all really good, I gotta thank you for doing work, and, and, uh, just let us know what you wanna do to balance it. Probably November, we should talk again, remember, beginning of December.
So, in order to plan, I should know if you're on board with spending seven hundred and fifty-six dollars?
Yes, we can make a motion, if somebody, yeah, give them up to eight hundred, and then that way something comes up, he doesn't have to come back.
Okay.
So somebody needs to make a motion.
It's up to you guys if you need to do that.
No, but we need to do that, 'cause it's, it needs to be approved, so...
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, um, allow up to eight hundred dollars to District Clerk Andy McLean to expend on, give you the name of the...
The configuring the, the vote tabulator and printing the ballots.
On configuration of the vote, tabulator, and ballots.
Printing.
Printing.
Perfect.
Second.
That was a perfect, but...
In a second, so let's give Peter a second to get caught up.
Move to authorize expenditure of up to eight hundred dollars by Mr. McLean to configure the vote tabulator and print the ballots.
Excellent. Everybody good with that? Any discussion now in the audience? Any discussion from the board?
Do you have a second?
Yeah, Laura's second. All those in favor, it's not town meeting, I'm actually paying attention. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're good to go, and if you need more, come back, but if, you know, that's what I need to go with. Okay, thank you, sir.
Uh, Laura?
So members of, we're now members of the public, so other than the voting and Andy's report, anybody from the public have any comments, issues, questions, concerns? I don't do members of the staff, but, Camille, anything you need to? Matt? All good, okay. Review and approve the minutes for September fourth, twenty eighteen meeting? Okay, make sure all the public to, just, if we did pass a sign-up sheet, just so Peter can get you down.
I've got all of them.
Oh, you, you got it all?
Yes.
Okay. Um, review and approve the minutes of the September fourth, twenty eighteen meeting, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Barry seconds it, and Laura moved it, Peter. Is there any discussion? Carrie, none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Anita, communication report.
Hi.
Hi.
The website continues to be up to date. It's always after the day after the meeting. I always change the date for the next meetings and the minute the video is available, I get an email on that, so that's linked immediately and the minutes are up immediately after I get them from Margaret, so that is always a resource. The columns continue to appear in the Bucketville News and they are aware that we will bug them for a longer column at the end of this year to explain all the voting and balloting and petitioning and all that. I don't know whether they'll charge us for that or not like they did that other time, so that remains to be cleared up. I have a request from the Bucketville News that if citizens of Dover would like to receive the Bucketville News, all they have to do is email the Bucketville News with their email address and they're automatically signed up. It's free. The email to the Bucketville News is bucketvillenewsvt@gmail.com. So any Dover resident, taxpayer, parent concerned with school affairs is welcome to get the Bucketville News for free. Front porch forum continues to be a good resource. I'm continuing to post that to that for free, but they have requested that starting in March two thousand and nineteen, we pay for our services. I talked to Bill Anton about that. I would be posting for the West River District as well, well as the River Valleys District, and he sort of said he'd pick up the tab for that, but they only allow eight posts a month. So we have to look at the costs versus what we're actually getting out of it, but that's for later on. I did want to do a start-of-the-year press release, but you all were a little hard to track down, so I think what I'll shoot for, if it's okay with the board, is a sort of end-of-the-year progress report, press release, just before all the validy, budgety, petitiony stuff comes out, we can maybe get together one of each of you, one each of you from each town and just have a twenty-minute chit-chat about what might be good. By the November tenth is the deadline for the December Bucketville. It's always way early. So anything that's going to happen in December that's important, November tenth is a critical date for me to have all that information available and send in to the Bucketville, all the dates, all the deadlines, all that. The posters are still going out. If there's anything else the principals want or the staff at the schools want or that parents are asking for with regard to information and posting or the public, let me know. There was a question at the last meeting here as to whether or not the information was available with links on the Dover Town website. As promised, I did contact Jeanette White and she assured me immediately that it's all there, it's all posted, it's all available. It's always all current, so she is doing a good job keeping that up to date. And I'm the one keeping it up to date on wardsborvermont.com because I do that website. I also want to let you all know that if you have children that you're sending to the West River District for Leland and Gray, the West River District has a new website that's up and running. It's being done at WCSU, not by me, and it's called westrivered.org and, or you can link to it right from the WCSU homepage. So if you want to follow along with what they're doing, that's available online. So the next big important thing for me is making sure that I have all the right deadlines and all the right info as all the petitions and ballots and all that comes around. That'll be a real important thing for me. I'm happy to take any questions or answer any questions from anyone.
Jeanette, great.
Jeanette, thank you. What did I say?
Jeanette White. You said Jeanette White.
I knew I was thinking of her because of something.
So, our next meeting, well, I just asked Laura to look it up. We weren't looking at her, like, Facebook page or anything, but eleven-five and eleven-nineteen are our two meetings in November. And eleven-nineteen is not the week before Thanksgiving. I don't think it is, because Thanksgiving is late this year.
Yeah, it was late.
And then twelve-three and twelve-seventeen are the two December meetings. So you needed something by November fourth?
By November tenth.
Tenth, so we should be good for the first November meeting and then, so then it's probably twelve-ten. So we'll have a meeting before each one of those deadlines.
Right, and that's where I need to really have specific and accurate info. And if it wasn't for the Bucketville's early deadline, it wouldn't be so crunch, but because they have an early deadline, that's where things stand.
And I lied, so if we meet on that Monday, then that Thursday is Thanksgiving, but, you know, it's maybe probably far enough away. What's a school, Tammy, or my?
We're closed that week.
The whole week?
Teachers have PD, but
Okay, so it's not like everybody's gone and done.
Right.
Okay. So, I think, go ahead.
Oh, Anita, did you get one of my schedules?
No, I didn't. I was gonna ask you to email me one.
There you go.
Oh, thank you.
I can email one too.
Yes, please.
Digital.
I'll keep it in my file.
Okay. Andy, all set, sir?
Yep.
Go ahead, Laura.
I just wanted to thank you again, Anita. I think you're doing a great job. This is really, really important to have good peer communications. I appreciate.
Well, thank you, Laura. Any improvements or changes, just let me know. I can make it better.
Okay, if everybody's all set, then we'll move on. Okay, you guys all set?
All set.
Okay, oh, business. Review proposed timeline and process for focus on Wardsboro campus. So we kind of, over the last few months, we're talking about how what the structure's gonna be and the board kind of came to the conclusion that we'd like to find a focus for the Wardsboro campus. And we gave Bill a charge to be fairly broad so that if IB is the focus that it needs to be, it could be, or if there's something else out there. So you all should have gotten a Wardsboro campus focus. So my understanding is this came from Bill in consultation with Tammy and her staff, or Tammy, you consulted your staff and somehow everybody's had input in this, correct?
Correct.
Matt, did you have input in this?
I have not.
Okay, have you seen it?
I have not seen it.
Okay, I was told you had seen it or were gonna be seeing it, so. So basically, it looks like in October, they're gonna have a meeting with Wardsboro campus teachers. Teachers will need to implement whatever focus is decided. They're very key stakeholders. They're also gonna be with Dover campus teachers. Ideas for focus, how to engage River Valley's public and how to create the survey. Are they, there's some of these over there? Oh. Okay, I'll see if when Matt comes back, can you make some copies? November, they're gonna assign and send a survey for River Valley parents. Have focus options, including IBs, solicit other responses, solicit comments. The reason why is to, does somebody have one that they could give? Matt, could you make some copies?
I thought there was Did it left a folder of things? It looks like it's all
Okay, can you pass some out? I'm sorry, I thought they were out. Sorry about that, folks. So anyways, the why is need to hear from parents and need to have preliminary ideas discussed with Wardsboro campus prior. December, they'll want a whole public meetings in Dover and Wardsboro, Monday, December tenth, and Tuesday, December eleventh. And to share survey results and hear from the public about the results, opportunities to whittle down options. In January, they'll send a new survey that's more explicit based on previous survey results. Get options more crystallized, and that gives parents the opportunity to provide feedback on more specific options. And then in February, review the results at the February thirteenth annual meeting, because we'll be able to get input from the stakeholders then, consult with administrators, and consult with the Wardsboro campus. And then in March, Bill would make a presentation to the present options to the board and begin decision-making. Some of the areas of importance is we want equity for all students, transportation is a challenge, enhance educational opportunities, concern of varied enrollments, and challenge in multi-grade classrooms in the Wardsboro campus. So, I'm sorry that you're just getting to see that, but I'll let you guys digest that for a few minutes. The board, you've had this for a little while. Is there any comments from anybody in the board?
No, this is a good time, I mean, it's reasonable. Not a time to get things done and moving along.
Anybody else? Do I need to be all set there? I can't really see you doing anything, so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it was good.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joyce, go ahead, huh?
Well, Bill's not really here. He's wanting to line this, but
Yeah.
Yeah, so really, question would be, there's two surveys, obviously, so it seems like they're focusing, getting a more specific focus and having a second survey, but also I'd see more involvement from the teachers. It seemed like just initially, there's teacher involvement and the rest is with the public. Unless I'm not understanding that quite right. But I'm sure Bill, yeah.
Well, because I think the idea is to do the original with the staff
Right.
and after you get the public to flesh out some of the ideas, then you also, February, before it goes,
Yeah.
you consult with the administrators, consult with the Wardsboro campus, so I, because I think the the surveys are something that he's probably just gonna generate more himself.
Yeah, okay.
Tammy, did you discuss any sort of committee or anything like that that would be put together and what the makeup of that committee would be?
With Bill or with the staff?
With Bill.
No.
But that's something I think that would be very beneficial.
Well, I think that is in the first couple meetings, how to, what what makeup of the committee should be. I think that's part also how to engage River Valley public. Matthew, sir?
I just said I have seen this.
Okay.
As you might have just mentioned too, that the idea about having the teachers up front was definitely to put things through them first and try to find what, what, you know, what's gonna get them excited.
And we also included the Dover campus teachers, because there may be a Dover camp, if if the Wardsboro campus says we're really excited about X, Y, and Z, and maybe there's some Dover staff members that have had experience from that in previous lives or you know, or maybe that's something that they'll want to actually maybe do instead of the IBs, so we thought it was important to get all our professional staff and, and you can get both administrators, but to let Wardsboro have first shot at it because it's it's that campus and you know, they have, should have a better feel for what the public and the parents and and the students find them resting over there, so I I thought it was a really good again, it's a framework, it's not set in stone, and if things need to get varied, you know, we can vary them. It's not like, you know, if we don't follow everything right to the D, it goes away. Yes. Somebody, anybody else? Everybody good? Okay, so we'll let Bill know that he's blessed on, he's blessed on his proposed timeline and process focus on the Wardsboro campus. Next item was review campus choice sample policies. So I asked Bill, because he's an educator, not not, to give me a ten-question test to see if you guys really read these and reviewed them. And he also told me to make sure I do it in public to embarrass everybody who didn't read it and doesn't get it right. But if you don't answer at least five of the questions right, there'll be no snacks for you if you ever have cake.
If we ever have cake.
You should have tests, actually.
It's a long time.
Barry, not as great a kid for the, for the first party.
It's not a bad idea.
It's only just once, right?
I'm hoping maybe at this annual meeting, Barry, we're gonna be in Wardsboro again. They know how to feed us.
That's right.
So anyways, and I think, Matt, was there some of these policies in that file?
We have.
Okay, so there should be a couple. There's code C thirty-five elementary middle school in district transfer program. I forget what town this is for, S B M U U S D.
Valid, modified. Do you have any questions?
You have five units.
Yeah. There you go.
Rick, you've got a point. And then we have, we have Otter Valley, and we have some frequently asked questions about Otter Valley. And we have MRU USD, Elementary School and District Transfer, and we, Bill actually got quite a few. And then inter-district school choice for elementary and middle schools. Remember, all we're concerned about is elementary schools because we have no middle schools or high schools. And parental choice program, the timeline, the application forms. And in district school choice for seventh and eighth grade students with
That's great to have in our area, right?
Yeah. So, there's a bunch of pages, that's why it was a twenty-five-page agenda, Andrew, that I didn't send you. So, any comments from the board?
Go ahead.
So, the CB, Champlain Valley, right? Champlain Valley School District, they're interd, I would like to just kind of take that and push it to the side. It's a much larger district, so I think it's gonna be really challenged. I would prefer that we not spend a lot of time on that. You know, I think we're looking at a situation where we have, we really have to be focused on maintaining some equilibrium and some stability in the schools, so, which they have less need to focus on that, I think. The other, I think there were a lot of, I think there were a lot of stabil, a lot of similarities between the others elementary schools, which is great. The, and when I first read them and now, and looking at them again, the question that comes up for me is are administrators, there's going to have to be some sort of box, some sort of policy around how we make a determination about available space. Because, again, we have two small schools here and you get blips. And so, you know, that can change, you know, we could say that, you know, it's a classroom, you know, ten is I think it's, it's gonna be tricky going back and forth, and I think it will be hard to be I think it'll be hard to be consistent, you know, if we say no less than ten in the class, what if we, you know, have two classes of, you know, nine kids? One year, and then we have two classes of, you know, twenty kids. I, I just think that that piece will really need to be, we need to think about that.
Anybody else on the board?
I think those are probably procedures more than they are policies.
Exactly.
So, I mean, it's really the administrative procedures that are gonna be more important in this than the actual policy itself, because as you said, most of the things that I read, and as I've read, they were very similar between all of them. So.
I agree with you, Champlain, yeah. Champlain does not make the decision solely the superintendent's with the parent being able to come to the board. You know, that's their only recourse if they don't agree with the administrator. And I, I don't like that because it wasn't in that one, so I I agree with you getting rid of that one. I thought the other ones, the other two I thought were pretty similar. It almost looked like they were the written one.
There's four.
But there's only, but some of them have the other stuff that, I did like the Champlain, we got all the forms and stuff. And I thought some of the forms were interesting, but, and we only got, like, we got frequently asked questions about Otter Valley, unified meaning school district, which I thought was kind of nice and is something that Anita would love to have for, you know, when she starts putting this stuff out, so. So I was good with the other ones and maybe, you know, we'll take some more comments, but I thought if these were, if we were gonna lean towards a couple of them, maybe we could ask the superintendent to kind of make it River Valley-specific and then see what it looks like and kind of go from there. So, any other comments from the board on these?
I have one more. One more, thinking about, you know. Well, no, I guess that's the last size is. I just feel like we have to, it's, it has to be really well-understood. We don't want to have a lot of subjectiveness, I think, in these. And I am, and I am, I'm nervous about the whole equity piece.
If you look at the first one, code C thirty-five and one for Slate Valley, number three, transfer, transfer request may be denied, the request to transfer would have a negative impact on class size staffing to send it receiving school or due to other extenuating circumstances in determination approval or denial made by the superintendent's office. And I mean, I think that's what we're looking for is that, to make sure that it isn't, you know, everybody bailed out of Dover because they all want to go to Wardsboro because it's small class size and then all of a sudden, we can't handle them all to Wardsboro campus.
Right. So, but the equity piece, I think we have to be really careful because we do have one district. All of the kids belong to that district. All of the kids belong to that district. And so we have to ensure that all of the kids have equitable opportunities. And so if there are significant differences in the program, it makes it very difficult to say no for anyone, including class sizes. You know, I mean, if, you know, if we're offering, you know, advanced, an advanced math track on one of the schools and not the other, it's gonna be really hard to say no.
But I also think too that policies are not set in stone and can never be var, I mean, policies can't be varied by administration, but they can be changed by the board. And if we see something isn't working, then we can make changes to it.
Yes.
And I think until we actually get to operate for a year or two, and I think that's what we've heard from a lot of people, is that we really need to see how this is all gonna kind of sugar out. I hate that term. But see where, where everything goes because we could adopt a policy and even before school ever operates under that policy, we may get recommendations that the administration may come to us and say, hey, look, whatever, number two, you know, on a non-discriminatory basis, well, that doesn't work. We have to discriminate on where they live. I don't know. But there, there may be changes recommended and, you know, we can make changes to the policy within 15 days. So if we find there is something that doesn't work, you know, we're not locked into it forever and ever.
I think just, I think the only point that I want to make is just around choice and equity, not, I mean, that those two concepts are very closely tied.
So remember, we're not offering equity, we're offering substantial equitable. So that doesn't mean everything has to be exactly the same.
Just remember the difference between us today.
I know, we'll get hurt. So anyways, public, have you had a chance to look at that? Matt and Tammy, not to put you on the spot, but have you seen these before?
I, I have them.
Do you have any comments off the top or?
Not, I mean, I think like you said, we sort of have to wait and see. Things are gonna come up and you're never gonna be able to predict everything that's going to happen. There's always going to be a special case and scenario that's going to pop up that was unexpected, so.
And that's why they have the ability, or a couple of these policies have the ability, if you disagree, if a parent disagrees, a student disagrees with a decision made by administration, they get to come and, you know, the board is not hurt, so they'll hear the administration's side, they'll hear the student's side. And you've got six people making an informed decision. So, you know, I think that's the safety net to make sure that, you know, Lord, glory, your concerns are covered too. I, I think if we try and make, and now, sorry, if we try to make a policy right off the bat that's gonna cover everything that may happen for the next 20 years.
I know, we're gonna have to trial by fire, but I hate going.
Matthew, sir.
So one of the things that stuck out to me when I read through these was the, it hadn't really occurred to me was the idea of an application for choice. So it brings in the concept of free choice versus choice that you have to apply for. I hadn't really thought that through much as I've listened to all of this, but clearly looking at the Otter Valley piece, you apply for it and you may not be approved for it. That's something that in my head up till now with all of this process, I had been imagining some kind of free choice. Frankly, I'm having a hard time getting my head around that, but this is, this helped me through that a little bit. I think it'll be something to think about as a board, is just the idea of a free choice versus choice that's applied for, where there's a decision involved.
And the problem with free choice is that's gonna, that could affect our, our whole concern from day one of the study group is that, and, and, you know, people think, well, it may be Dover taking over Wardsworth, but it could be that, you know, everybody wants to go to Wardsworth because they, they love the small class size. And all of a sudden you don't have small class size and you have not enough room in the building to take them all. So, you know, there has to be some process to say, you know, yes or no. And that's why I like the one that says, you know, we, the superintendent needs to consider, you know, the decision. And we may even want to just add to, you know, the superintendent makes a decision based on input from the administrators of the bill, of the campuses. I mean, I think those are the kind of minutia things. Remember, policy is mandatory and you have to do what the policy says. If the policy says you have to fill out an application, they have to fill it out. And then procedures, the administration creates procedures to fit our policy. Joy?
You know, I thought it was interesting too. I think that the Mill River one was kind of the one we kind of modeled what we're doing. Because they, they were, they had, their elementary schools were buried and they were, they wanted to give as much school choice as possible. But they also have what's called a sending school and a receiving school, so you do have to apply. However, they're only, you know, the only thing that they have restricting is class size. So they have right in, right in there is that class size, whether it negatively impacts the size of the class or staffing issues, that's the only way that they can, they can stop students from going between. But other than that, it's pretty well open for, for choice. But that, you know, obviously it's a major issue is, is class size, and that's what we gotta figure out. Because if we're gonna have true equity, and like Matt says, we really need to try to move it as possible. I don't know how else we can do it.
Yeah, Mill River was one of those, like that one. Is that the one you?
Yeah, that's the one that you were talking about from our digger article, and they're the ones that had the individual schools. So they, so I was interested in how they were planning on going about it. And basically they're, it's wide open, although they don't provide any transportation. And they, they can restrict size.
That's an interesting piece.
That's the next piece, though, not the next.
I know, it's not the next, that's the next one, so, but it is in there, it is in here.
But if you go for choice, your transportation's on your own.
Well, or, or we could do tran, I mean, we could be either way.
Okay, but let's finish this question.
Just I hope everybody understands, we're not making a decision on, and we're not voting on something tonight. I'm hoping to give some direction to the superintendent to bring a cleaner thing back to us. And then, and remember, if something important like this, we've always said we'll, we'll at least discuss it once in each town, so we would not make a decision. So don't think that we're, we're gonna vote on one of these and that's gonna be the law of the land. So we'll go to Andy in the back and then Anita.
Oh, so it seems like you guys read these things before you came tonight. So thank you. That's really cool that you actually do your homework as a board before you show up. That's really cool. First of all. Second of all, I lied, I did receive this and I read them.
Second lie, that's exciting.
And there was one that was a lottery system that I kind of liked. And it would eliminate somebody having to make a decision or an application being, you know, rejected because of some, you know, qualitative deficiency. Every kid is, is given the same chance. There's a certain date by which the school says, you know, hey, in Wardsworth we can accept two students in grade two. And then the Dover parents are alerted of that. They, the ones who want to fill those slots, put in the, the applications and there's a lottery system. Preferences given to people who didn't get a choice last, the previous year and people who had a sibling already in the other school and something else. But the lottery system seemed like it would be at least fair to me. Just a comment.
I think yes, I'm sorry.
Mine was just a comment as well, was actually, it follows that because I, I've been wondering sort of what this process is gonna look like. And I was thinking one of two things, sort of a lottery, either a, each school can take, you know, five students from the other community in sort of a, whether it was an application or a lottery, or what does that look like? And what does that look like if you have a sibling, like, okay, Tommy's name gets pulled out, but Sally also wants to come and that's his little sister. So, you know, I've, I've been curious what that looks like. As a parent, as a community member, I mean, I like the application process only because it feels like it gives a little context to why a family is applying to go to the other school campus. And I think, I think that's a big deal for me. Like, if I had a child in first grade, then, I mean, I work in Dover, so I might possibly apply to come to Dover because it would have been way more convenient. At this point, like, we're gonna end our, you know, we're at the other end of elementary school, we'll finish out in Wardsworth. But I, I've talked with other parents too about sort of what this process looks like. And, you know, I've heard a lot of different reasons why somebody might switch schools. And I think, I mean, maybe this is judgmental, but I think some things are more viable than others. And so I, I just want, mine was more of a comment that I support the application process. I think that gives a little meat to what's, it's not just everybody sort of bouncing around and there's no real rhyme or reason. And it doesn't really, I feel like, give the administration or the board sort of a sense of why people are switching. I think if you have an idea of why families are switching, it's gonna help you sort of structure the school and support each campus a little better.
Yeah, that could be really telling too, if like, you know, as far as earlier.
Yeah, whatever it is those families are looking for, what, how does that allow the board to tweak and, you know, plan the budget for the next year? Like, we have a lot of families applying to move because of X. How can we elevate that over here?
So just as a comment, real quick, and then we'll get to Anita and Mark and Andy. So it was the last thing I found. The lottery system will be used if the school receives more requests than space is available. So that could be like almost a procedure, and it's in the procedure, it's not in the policy. It's one of the guidelines. So that's definitely a procedure that we could do. I looked at all the applications because I, I was thinking that is why does somebody want, you know, why would you want to move? You know, like, you know, there's, one thing that we've always been hurt by in small schools is not every teacher's gonna gel with every child. Every student's gonna be a little different. And maybe a child may do better with this teacher than that teacher, and that may be a reason why. But none of that shows in, in the application process, and that's a hard one. Or we even had students drop out of Dover to go to another school because there was, the class was just tough.
Sure.
And so I don't know though how much that, that to me seems more personal stuff. And I think that may be, and Tammy and Matt, maybe, I mean, if you have a parent come in and say, you know, my child doesn't gel with teacher A, B, or C, I mean, what do you do? Would, would that be something you feel comfortable saying, well, maybe we should send you to the other campus for a year? I mean, or is that something that wouldn't even show up? And, and maybe we can just bring that to Bill's attention and, you know, when you guys are working on that to, to think about. I mean, it's, I don't want to put you on the spot now because you haven't had the ability now, but I'm sure you've had parents come in that are concerned about the makeup of the class or the other students. So that's something we definitely want to kind of keep in the forefront. Those are good points. Anita?
Looking at the one from Champlain Valley School District, right up front, they use the language that says, processes for inter-district choice of school be guided by existing resources. And I think those are two key words right there, existing resources. So if, you know, an excess of students want to transfer to a campus that can't accommodate them, the word existing resources is in the language to say we're not building another classroom right, like, before school starts, just for that.
However, we can move staff.
Existing resources is a big, big key phrase in this.
Can't move staff, it's a problem.
Yeah, it's gonna be a little tougher to move staff if you have the IB and they have to be, have IB classes. But I mean, that's, that's again, that's not us. We're not, we, we do not get to determine where, what staff is gonna work in what building. That's gonna be up to people's, with more degrees than me. Mark?
Well, I mean, in the end, we do, actually, get to make that determination, but we're not gonna go through.
No, we don't get, and we don't get to tell which teacher teaches in the classroom.
No, and we don't want to, but we are gonna, we're not completely.
We can make recommendations, but no, we don't get to make the final say. That's why we hire professionals.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're not choosing classrooms, but I mean, in terms of how staffing would go back and forth, we certainly will.
We can give, definitely give numbers, but they even took, you know, legislature even took the ability for us to hire staff away. Mark?
I'm bitter, are you?
No, I'm not bitter at all. I mean, I think it, it almost makes sense, but the problem is, is if you have a person that you're not happy with their, how they're administering, and then they get to build, you know, and they're gonna hire people that are kind of, that they're, I, I think sometimes it's good to have four or five members on the board. Well, a lot of times we've had people in Dover that the administrator really wanted and the board told them no, and they were really glad that that board told them that because a few years down the road, there's problems with that staff member in other places. So, I mean, you know, it's harder than a single person to, to make a decision, you know, but, and that's why we've got really good staff and really good administrators that are, use a process, but they don't even have to do that. That's a courtesy to allow the board members and the parents. I mean, Matt can go out and, you know, if Matt needs a teacher, he can just go hire somebody. He doesn't need to do a process now. Or, you know, he can recommend to Bill that they hire somebody. Bill can do that without a process, so it's, it could be scary. So anyways, your comment?
My comment's also about the Champlain Valley. I know you guys kind of push it aside because of the size, but from a policy versus procedure perspective, this seems almost perfect to me with the exception of the lack of some sort of recourse. It starts with, with you're going to the school in your residence, based on your residence, which seems to me that should be a basic starting block. And then it provides an opportunity for the parent to request otherwise. Unless you're gonna start literally putting numbers into a policy, which can change year to year, doesn't seem to me want to do that, that would be procedure-wise. That if you want something that's pretty open for the administration to make those decisions.
Your first con, your first part of that was it has no what? The Champlain Valley didn't have something?
Oh, some sort of recourse.
Recourse?
Yeah.
There's no recourse, okay. Do you think, sir?
No, that's it.
Or you want to make comment?
I'm just, you know, the numbers thing is, I, I just feel like we've got too much of a sense. I think it might be instructional, actually, for us to have historical information on class sizes for both schools for the last five years, which I think we've looked at in, in other times. But it might be really helpful for us to have that information in front of us when we are looking at these policies, just to ground us in reality.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I'd have a hard time telling someone not to go somewhere if they want to go somewhere for, for, especially educational purposes, if they want to go to a certain school. But I certainly agree with the application process. If we can get that application by December, and then we know by the following, you know, following school year, what we're dealing with, then we can make accommodations for the students. So I would think that would be like similar to what you're saying, I guess. That would be a way to go.
One of the interesting things is most of the policies have like an April 1st.
Oh, whatever, whatever the timeline.
Again, is that doesn't, but that doesn't allow the budget, for you to change the budget, but.
Yeah, I would, I would give, I would give more.
But we give the budget, if, if the administrator gets a budget and he can disperse it however he wants. Or however they want, you know, superintendent and then the, the building people. So maybe they budgeted in Dover to have, you know, a full day of music and they find only one person wants to instrumental music, but Wardsworth campus, you know, they had a lot more people than ever came in before. That can be moved and adjusted.
I don't know that the budget would change. I'd like to tell students it'll remain the same.
No, I'm saying the budget doesn't change at all, how he uses the budget.
Yeah.
So if he had been planning a, you know, a full-time, one day a week, you know, instrumental music in Dover in one hour in the Wardsworth campus, but there's only one student in the Dover campus, he's not gonna have that person be here for a whole day for one student. So he can move that around and he can say, okay, you were supposed to be at the Dover campus for a day, but you're gonna be actually at the Wardsworth campus for a day because you've got 10 students. And, and that's moving around. Didn't, the budget didn't change, just where he utilized it. Yes, sir.
Just a word caution about the numbers. You could have a family move in to a district that has four kids in the same grade. And if you start putting numbers in, you could end up in a situation where in one building, you're now too large, but all those students are from the town. So you just have to make sure.
Well, and most of them, most all of them do say that, you know, your first choice is the town that you reside in, so that would be a given.
As long as you're not putting a maximum size on on.
No, even if you put a maximum size, it it the the sizes, so you may not allow any transfer out because that class may be full. So we said there was 10 students in a class. There's now 10 students because it's all full from people that live in Ward's Borough. So we won't allow any Dover people to go to the Ward's Borough because it will put it over the number.
Just it's verbiage. You have to make sure that's the way it's determined then.
Yeah, I mean, that I do not think we can put numbers really. I mean, I think it would be challenging to put numbers because they fluctuate so much.
No, that is what I was saying.
Yeah.
Well, I I think you can put maximum numbers though, because you're not gonna want a teacher to have 30 students.
Well, you could put maximum, sure. You could put maximum numbers.
And I think that's what they're I think that's kind of what they're looking at.
But if you put maximum numbers and you don't put minimum numbers.
But so what if your minimum number is 10, but there's only seven total second second graders? Are we not gonna have a second grade class anywhere because they don't need the minimums?
This is what I'm saying. This can be rough.
I I don't think it's as rough as everybody's saying it's gonna be. I mean, technically, we're supposed to have class size and the state is already. Does the state, Matt, have a a optimal class size recommendation and?
It's 14.
Yeah, in the smaller and but the fifth and sixth can go, I thought, a little higher. Four, five, six were up to 20.
I would say 19.
19.
I think it's 24.
24.
24. I thought that was I thought that was middle school, but anyways, it's not a big deal. I mean, we we shouldn't get tied up on the minutia. We're looking big picture with policy. We're not looking at minutia.
Just a quick question. The educators might know. Don't they do this on the high school level anyway? Like Brattleboro says, we can accept 30 kids from another town. I mean, Twin Valley. I mean, so it's being done anyway on some of a lottery, on a lottery type system. I mean, maybe we can do something different.
That's just that's between private, between public schools.
Well, it's interdistrict. It's people outside the district can can go to that school.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
But that's been around for 15 years or so.
And it's February is the deadline for that.
No, I don't.
There's a there's a system out there.
And we're not reinventing the wheel. So if we're okay, if nobody else has any other comments for right now on the the you know, recamp his choice sample policies, um Bill promised me he would watch the video and that he would take what we said and give us something to um to review for our next meeting. So as soon as you can get the video out there, man, the better quicker we'll get that. And and then hopefully, you know, Matt, Tammy, when you guys talk with him next time, you can kind of give him the feel and then he'll see how the minutes from Peter. So and if you have any other comments, again, we're not gonna pass out cards, but if you think of something in between, please, you know, drop it off with either Tammy or or Matt so that they can have that too. But again, it's I don't believe it's something you'll see voted on at the next meeting. I'm sure it's gonna be into December before we get that one hammered out. Everybody okay with moving on? Any other thoughts? So for this next one, there is no test. That's why Andy left because it was gonna be my my what do they call that? The proctor?
Proctor.
Proctor. There you go. So I Bill just sent out. So what we have is we have the Ward's Borough Elementary School current policy on transportation and we have the Dover School F9 transportation policy. Both of these have been fairly recent. We revised the one in Dover 2016 and the one in Ward's Borough was 2014. So these are all within four years, which is really good in the recommendation. Then the other item that we had, the third sheet you should have is um the transportation, current secondary transportation. So we um thought Rick and I meet with Bill when we set up the agenda for the meeting. And one of the things we thought was it would be good to see what the policies currently are in the two buildings. And then we thought it'd be interesting to see what um each school does currently for transportation in the secondary. Um, so that's your your third sheet. And then Bill gave us the sample policies that have come from again, different um different school district or I'm sorry, from the V SBA, the sample transportation policy. So I wasn't gonna spend a lot of time on this. Um, I just thought if everybody could kind of be aware of it in the next meeting, um we'd get some some input and ideas. And we will accept any comments if anybody has any now from either the board or the public or the administration. We'll go with the board first. Any comments from the board?
Are we discussing secondary?
Both secondary, yeah.
Is there anyone who can find out the numbers? I'm always curious where the numbers in Dover, where they're going and you know, I've never really seen.
Matt can do that for us for sure for the next meeting.
What was the question?
The numbers.
Just where everyone's going.
And how many take the bus?
And that well, yeah, that would be tougher, but yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, that'd be tougher.
Right, but we we also we we keep track of that in Dover because we've always wondered about that. And you know, one of the things, this is kind of the the end of the last meeting, is at one time the Leland and Gray bus, if every student that was enrolled from Dover went to Leland and Gray, the 66 passenger bus would be over full. And we actually had a board member, they got all up in arms and we were trying to figure out what to do and it just never happened because not everybody goes to school all the time and and you got sports and people that drive themselves. So um I think not only just Dwight, I think you're right, just the number that could be going, but if you have an average too, it would be interesting to see.
That might be tougher, but that's great.
Yeah.
I mean, it looks like what we're doing right now between the two schools is pretty similar. So.
Yeah.
Except I think that Ward's Borough's policy is to try to provide transportation to every student. Is that right?
No, I don't see that.
No?
No, they will establish routes concerning safety and the children.
Are we running one bus timing now?
Turn to students in all grades once they've attained the age of five.
Yeah, that's why I had.
About one morning.
Two in the interest.
Right, which that's not what ours is. Ours is May.
What is it?
Yours is will. Ours is May.
Yeah, will is mandatory, may is permissive.
Is it a minute?
If you look at the Ward's Borough, Laura picked up something really good. If the Ward's Borough one says the board will furnish transportation to all students once they have attained the age of five and Dover said we may provide transportation to them from school.
That's based on elementary school.
Yes.
That's our pop policy.
Oh, is the elementary school?
No, Dover's policy is K through 12 and Ward's Borough doesn't specify.
I would say it's safe to assume that that's only through sixth grade though because Ward's Borough only provides high school, middle and high school transportation to Leland and Gray outside of that.
Yeah, but the policy their policy doesn't say that.
I'm just wondering, is that necessary?
Well, it's only for this year.
Yes, it's it expires.
Expires after June 30th.
Only you know last year.
If you only knew, see, you needed Lorden.
I'm fine, but.
So um so anyways, anybody else from the board on any of the transportation issues? Public out there? Any comments on transportation? Go ahead.
Uh, well, one is just a comment and I know it's like there's we have a ways to go to get there, but um again, as a community member and as a parent, I think like once you're talking about choice, I definitely think if you're choosing a school outside of your community, parent should be responsible for that transportation. That's my own two cents. Um, and then.
And that is in some of those choice policies?
It is in some of those choice policies and I'm just, you know, I voiced everything else I've thought, so why not that too? Um, and then am I understanding right that right now you guys are trying to formulate what it looks like in elementary and middle and high school transportation across both campuses, but all the way to 12th grade depending on? So like what does that choice look like?
Transportation.
Transportation, right. But the choice of school based on transportation, like.
Yes. One of the things that we talked about and bounced around a little bit was even if both campuses are the exact same thing, you know, uniformly, that there still should be some inter-campus activities because it is one school district. So that would require either students here going there or those coming here, which would require some sort of transportation between. So I I think one of the policies says that we will not provide transportation unless there happens to be a bus that your child can get on.
Sure.
Because maybe, you know, every Monday or every morning, they have a bus that goes from from Dover Center to Ward's Borough because for whatever reason, to bring some students over to participate in band.
Sure.
And they could ride that or you know, something like that. So I think and I think one of the things we need to decide as a board, are we gonna have a separate elementary transportation and a separate secondary? Or do we just cover it all in one?
I think it should be separate.
I'm sorry, sir.
I think it should be separate.
Yeah, and but it it who knows? It may be so simple. There may be two sections. Maybe A is elementary and B is is, you know, secondary transportation.
Yeah, I I'm going the other way. I I'll say if there's a bunch of students going to Burn Burton from here, if you're gonna support people going to Pratt, you need to support the other people too.
Yeah, the reason we don't do Dover, just so you know, is because it's a private school. It's not a public school.
Well, Hilltop or just anyplace else, if there's students going to a different location, you need to support those the same way.
Yeah, the the problem is if we supported every student that went to Dover to a different school.
Yeah, we can't.
We wouldn't be able, nobody would be able to live here because we've got students going to 20 different schools, Matt?
Yeah, fifteen.
Fifteen. Tammy, how many different?
Probably about the same.
Yeah, yeah, because we had we've had students before that had gone to Burlington High School.
But how do you say, okay, I'm gonna spend tax dollars on one student?
Because the voters, we we present to the voters the schools that are most populous and and it's changed over the years. We haven't always transported to the same schools. And you know, and that's something that parents need to consider when they decide where their child goes. If if they can drive their child to Burlington every day and they want their child to go to Burlington, that's, you know, we support that. We, you know, because the school choice can do that. There's been people in town before that petitioned for the school to align with another high school so that we cut out all the transportation and we only went to one school. So it's kind of a fine balance. When they approved the Burn Burton money in Dover, and this is more specific to Dover, the higher tuition rates, you know, it was with the agreement that they wouldn't ask for transportation. And parents know that if you if you need transportation, these are the schools of transport and that needs to be when people make their decision on where their child's gonna attend middle and high schools is, you know, part of that's transportation. My chi- children could have gone to Leland and Gray or Brattleboro. They went to Wilmington before it was Twin Valley because that was the most closest to where my wife worked. And we said if you want to do extracurricular activities like sports, we're not driving to Brattleboro five days a week. So I mean, that was part of the decision making process and it was not their first choice. It was their third choice. So I mean, it's a hard thing, but there's a lot more than just which school maybe fits your child best too. There's a lot of considerations we need to make. But we will definitely take that under advisement and and you know, it may be two policies because we've only dealt with the one in in both the schools.
I have two questions. One, I know Dover currently owns their buses and Ward's Borough rents their leases their buses. Um, and so I don't know if there's already been discussion.
Well, I don't think Ward's Borough leases. I think you have a contract with West River.
Okay, but but we don't own our buses.
You're right.
What I'm sorry, but we don't own our buses. So I don't know if there's been any talk that came up like at the beginning, like a couple of years ago, that was part of the conversation. Like, has there been any talk of what that looks like or is that we're not there yet as far as one campus owning buses and the maintenance that's required for that and the other one being under contract and?
No, so there there neither, the campuses don't own buses.
Okay.
So if the River Valley Unified School District will loan two school buses on July 1st.
Okay.
Unless we get rid of our buses before.
But wanting them to go over to the Ward's Borough campus?
It's it's we don't know. It's it's the one of the reasons why Dover has its own buses is is it's because it's been more economical for us and because we couldn't get anybody to contract with us anymore. Um, because it was West River couldn't take anymore on.
Okay.
Um, so it it the only way we could do some of that was because of that. But I think we need to get a policy together first and then the administration, the superintendent and the administrators are gonna have to look at where we need to go and how they're gonna do it. So they may utilize both buses. They may recommend that we sell them in contract or they may recommend we buy two more and and not contract at all. I mean, that's gonna be something that's gonna have to be discussed fairly soon.
My other question is, so I know that there's a per like as a student in a school, like there's a budget like $15,000 per student or whatever. Does that include transportation or is transportation different from that?
Transportation is special letter taken out of that figure. So the the per pupil spending is important for tax rates. So it is included, transportation is included in the per pupil spending.
Okay.
For tax rates because it's part of what you spend.
Okay.
Special ed is also included even though they say it isn't because what happens is is they come up with a total budget and then you you take that total budget and take all your grants off of that number.
Okay.
And some of your grants are transportation. It used to be it was 50%. Now it's like 40 somewhat percent of your previous year's actual expenditures, but it doesn't go to schools anymore. It goes to the district because they took transportation away from districts.
Okay.
So the only reason Dover's allowed to do their own is because nobody else would been on it and it's the most economical. Powell, a couple of years ago, the state refused to give them a waiver because their numbers were so high and there was other companies saying, hey, we'll do it. And they just haven't come to us.
Well, the the reason I'm asking is because I didn't know if there was a specific like $2,000 of that $15,000 goes towards transfer. I'm just throwing that out there, but the reason I was asking was if looking at equity in choice in that secondary um range, I didn't know if it would be possible for maybe parents to apply and say like, okay, like I've chosen this school and you guys don't provide transportation, but since I'm transporting, can I get 50% of that cost to offset my gas costs or something of that nature? So that that money's still going towards transportation, but the families are providing the transportation. Do you follow what I'm saying? I I don't even know if that's a possibility, but I'm I was curious in hearing these numbers and trying to figure out how you you can't provide transportation to 15 different schools because that is crazy. But how can you say, okay, you as a family have decided to go over here, so here you can get a stipend to help offset your gas costs because you do get choice to go to that school, but you have to provide the transportation? Does that make sense?
Yeah, you would have to draw a line because what if I decide I want my child to go to Hawaii?
Well, there'd be a limit.
But your stipend's a thousand dollars. Like if your stipend is a thousand dollars, like a thousand dollars for, you know, 100 students at the school, like whatever it is, then um that's what you get to help offset your costs. It's not necessarily going to cover all of your gas costs, but it's it's a way to say we don't provide a bus there.
So the short answer is yes, you can do that.
Okay.
You can offer stipends to people. Um, and I we it's something we looked into a long time ago and I I don't remember all the details. Laura says that that's what Somerset does.
Searsburg.
Searsburg, I'm sorry.
Somerset's only got three people.
Okay. And that they're all in school.
Right.
Okay. So yes, that is something to be done.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes?
I just, I like Ward's Borough's policy piece about at the age of five, they can then take transportation, having a preschooler this year that can't do transportation. Well, I have a daughter who is older and can. It would be nice like once my son turns five while he's in preschool to be able to ride the bus. So I'm encouraging this wording right here.
There is and and I think Ward's Borough was in 2014, the laws did change because at one time you couldn't transport anybody younger than five because they had to be in a car seat and there was a whole bunch of requirements. So that would be something to look into, but. Do you so you guys will let preschool kids?
Five year olds.
Birthday had to be before school started though, I think. Does that allow them into kindergarten? So basically you're saying you transport kindergarten kids?
Pretty much.
Okay.
So you don't transport currently if the child turns five and is in preschool?
Tammy's right next to you. She answers better.
We do, yeah. It's.
There's a there's a form that parents fill out before their birthday and then they are able to ride the bus that day.
Even in their preschool?
Yeah, and it it began when we started our pre-K program. More parents were interested and they again had older siblings that were riding the bus. So it was causing hardship for them to drive.
We did preschool last year. We think we had a conversation earlier with somebody, but we had very little ridership. It was nobody was utilizing it. So we, you know, again.
Can you read the half day piece?
Yes.
Well, Marlboro has now got pre-K, is not transporting the pre-K kids.
But they used to.
I don't know about that, but they're not allowed to now is my understanding.
This is the first year they've had pre-K?
Yeah. Basically the kids are just too small.
So again, we, no decisions are made, so we'll have these conversations again, so please, if you think of something in between, you know, let us know. We're using both Peter and the video for Bill to review to kind of get some ideas. And Matt, Tammy, hopefully you guys will kind of work with him on that, and, you know, we'll see if he can get us some locked-up policy to look at for the next meeting so we could do the campus choice and the transportation. Is everybody okay with that? You guys all good?
Sure.
Public, Matt, Tammy, all good? Cool. New business. I have two quick things, but Dwight, you got anything new? Eric? I talked to Joe Winrich, who's chairing the West River Group over in Townsend. They were originally meeting, we were meeting Mondays, they were meeting Tuesdays. Bill, at the annual budget, when we set the budget for 2018 last year, said that his goal, I'm sorry, for twenty eighteen, FY 2019, his goal was that he would have his administrators set up so that he wouldn't have to go to individual board meetings because his focus was going to be to work with the two, with the River Valleys, with West River and with Marlboro and with whatever Wyndham decided to get them going and get them up and running. Sometime in between, West River, who was meeting on Tuesday, said, oh, well, we're going to meet the first and third Mondays, which we already chose. So that's why we have no bill tonight, and we only get them every other meeting. So I had a little conversation with Joe, and I said I was really a little upset about that because, you know, we took the Mondays first and they had Tuesdays, but they could get better attendance on Monday, so they switched to Mondays. So my suggestion was that they go back to Tuesdays, which didn't go over well. But I also said maybe what we could do is set up that maybe, like, we can have Bill go to the West River Group first, and they could start at like six-thirty, and he could be there for forty-five minutes to an hour and leave, and then come to us for, and we would just schedule him for eight o'clock, anything that we needed, and he'd stay till eight-thirty, eight-forty-five, and then he's almost home anyways. So Joe was going to present that to his board, and a lot of times we don't need Bill, like, we're fine without Bill tonight because any questions, Matt and Tammy, usually one of them are at the meetings, can bring it back, it's on video. He does review the videos because he does say it, you know. I noticed that Mark said something and he'll make a comment about it, and we do have minutes. I didn't know what you guys, how you guys felt, but when we start doing budgets, we're going to need probably both, what?
Yeah, which is like right here.
Right, that's why he called me because he's going to talk to his board tonight. So I don't know how you guys feel. The other thing I said is, you know, we do have, you know, in the West River towns, very few of those boards and administrators are used to doing budgets. Matt, in his two years, has done budgets. I've been doing budgets for a long time. We do have Ricky and Laura that are very senior board members and have been through a lot of budget processes. So I don't even know if it's as important for us to have Laura hear that as much as the West River. We're not as complex because we don't have the high school, and we're not bringing four different school districts to get a full file, it'd be campus to New Brook. So I didn't know what your guys' feelings were, so I just wanted to bring that up and see what you all thought. Again, to have Bill come and sit through three hours for a meeting when, you know, a lot of discussion like the, I'm sorry, communications report and some of the other stuff is kind of like boilerplate, and he doesn't really need to sit through that, you know, to utilize, and that's one of our concerns has always been that we sometimes abuse superintendents. You know, Stephen Johnson had to be there in every meeting for every minute, and the poor guy just spent his whole life at meetings. So any thoughts are coming?
What are you proposing exactly? So we get, we get a half a bill?
Yeah, my thought was to kind of just be fair is we would do, we would say that, Bill, why don't you come to the second half of our meeting, and we'll take care of boilerplate stuff, and then if there is a question, like, somebody asked a question earlier and said they wish Bill was here, so we could just, you know, make a note of that when Bill comes, we can just get him up to speed quickly and say, well, this is what we thought. So that was kind of my thought. The second half with us because make Leland and Gray start earlier, or West River start earlier because we can't, because sometimes Dover meets beforehand, so. And I thought that would be fair, and plus he's closer home. It's not like him going away from home, but it's getting him closer.
He's got to have an hour drive to get here.
Right, but then he's five minutes from home, or even from Wardsboro, he's ten minutes from home. Are you guys okay with that if we set something up like that?
Doesn't sound like we have much of a choice.
Well, we can dig our heels in and yell and scream. I've done that before.
Yell and scream a little bit, I think, you know.
I mean, I think it's really important that.
Does it make more sense for us to talk about when we did the second and the fourth days? Mondays? I guess we'll see what they say on their end, but.
The problem with the second and the fourth is the fourths always wind up having something going on.
Why doesn't Leland and Gray with the second and fourth?
Well, that's kind of what I said to you too.
Come on.
They're also, you know, they're the bigger brother. You know, we've got worried about Wardsboro and Dover, Dover absorbing Wardsboro. If the West River Group overpowers us, they've got one time.
So I would say, you know, we, we're good, we need Bill.
We're going to need Bill.
We need Bill going into these. I think it's important because we're really shifting to the superintendent, making a lot more decisions and recommendations. And so we're going to start seeing a really condensed timeframe. You know, we're talking about this choice policy, you know, and transportation, I mean, those things are going to be needed, you know, for the budget and, like, this stuff is just going to start compressing. And so I support how the best way that you and Bill see for us to have him at as much of our meeting as possible. So whatever's reasonable, that's the most reasonable thing, but I think we have to have a means for him to be here, you know? And the other thing I will say is I think we have to at the supervisory union level, I think we have to get serious, actually, about the superintendent being able to participate virtually. It's actually much more sophisticated now, there are means of doing it where it's not crazy. And considering how big the district is and how much, you know, how much more authority the superintendent has, I think it's important, and also that we want to keep our superintendent, you know, that we figure that out.
Hey, Matt and Tammy, how hard would it be for you guys to go to the second and fourth Mondays?
It doesn't make a difference to me at all.
Matt?
It doesn't, I mean, we used to have four days a month, I mean, or, you know.
I'm just confused as to why you guys would change your date. I mean, I'm a little sister, I'm all about, like, I had it first, and we need it, and so you're going to have to change. So that's just my.
Because sometimes, you know.
I mean, like, you guys were already established in your time, and they encroached in your space. I say kick and scream.
You'll come with me.
Isn't Dover being first and third Mondays already?
Yeah, we could change Dover too.
So maybe you can just, for the first year, we can keep it and then we could.
Well, it's only really this budget period time. It's really, once we get by, it's the next two months.
We remove it after a year or something like that?
Three months. And then it's, again, remember, Bill's goal, and he said this at the, you know, the annual meeting, the superboard meetings, is, you know, he's training his administrators to be able to work with the boards so that he doesn't have to go to every meeting, so that when Matt and Tammy come to the meeting and we need something, they can either answer the question, because there's been superintendents that said, don't say a word unless I'm there, you know, you just take notes. You know, they're, he's giving them the authority to act on his behalf. And then if there's something that they're not sure of or they're feeling comfortable, they will tell us. We're not comfortable with that, but we'll find out and get back to you.
Well, I don't remember there yet, though. You know, a lot going on right now.
And the business manager, when it comes to budgets, can answer the questions a lot of times better than the superintendent did because that's the person that actually puts the budgets together, so just remember that.
Well, but we can also, so in Dover, we've, in Dover, we've never used the business office to put a budget together.
Be a culture adjustment.
We've used our administrators and we've used the board members, and we could do the same thing. I mean, the budgets are not all that as confusing as you may think they are. Because, and that's what I'm saying, having you as a veteran board member from Wardsboro, you know, even though Tammy has been the administrator, the sole administrator, she's been involved with them for a while, Matt's had a few years under his belt, plus out of the SU, and, you know, Laura's been a veteran board member too. So I don't think we're in as bad a shape. We need as much assistance as some others.
I agree, and I guess what I'm saying is that Laura is the one that is putting her budget together so he can spare her, you know, one or the other.
And that was why Joe called because, you know, they're going to have, again, Lori's got a lot more.
See, because if one, if you have it, not both, maybe this is the way to go back to
I don't know.
Takes care of your little sister thing?
I don't think they give it in too much.
I mean, that may work where they could go back and, you know, they could switch, like, one could start off at the one meeting, one starts at the other meeting, and they switch.
Oh, my God, those poor people.
I'd rather.
And then she's supposed to go home and.
Budget, where does it stand? That's it for new business, I won't say anybody else has anything.
You said you had two, there was only one.
No, it was Lori two. Oh, I have two notes here, but I don't know what the other one was. Bill's late or something. I don't know. I do have a quick executive session thing to ask you guys. No, I'm sorry, nothing's changed since last time. So I think if you guys are all good, we will meet again on October first in Wardsboro at seven o'clock.
And I will not be at that meeting.
Right, but Carrie's back. Is anybody else not here? Okay, so we're hopefully going to have some more homework, because hopefully we'll get the model policy, have Bill do model policy, and he'll tighten up on that, on the, and let us know about the study for the focus of the Wardsboro campus. And then hopefully he can give us, get us something with transportation. Matt, I think it would probably be, whoops, I'm sorry. You and Tammy will be able to get us numbers for transportation for the next meeting?
I can give you numbers of students enrolled.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and we keep working on that daily.
And Tammy, we need to have a.
I can have our bus driver certainly.
Yeah, just get, if you can get us a rough estimate, I think it would just help people feel a lot more comfortable.
And Laura will have the numbers, historical enrollment numbers.
Yeah, but that's all, we all have that.
But I think it's, it'd be great if we could just bring that to the next meeting, just so that.
So if we can, Matt, just, you know, the numbers that we've shown in the town report for the last five years.
I'm sure they have spreads, I'm sure you've got a spreadsheet somewhere, yeah, and.
Tammy, do you have that too?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we could get those numbers, awesome. You guys all good then?
Yeah.
Okay, who's going to make a motion?
Come.
Motion to adjourn.
Excellent. Second? Laura says dinner, so that's like the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out of here, guys, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Hey, thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
It's really important not to be in an echo chamber.